All right. So all of you are going to state your name when I say state your name?
Yup.
I know we're gonna do it. Okay, I'm ready. You guys ready? Raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
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 Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of City Council.
Discharge the duties of City Council.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
I'll come down here very quick.
All right.
All right.
We got to stand.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of people are taller than I am, Brian.
All right, sure.
Yes.
I.
I, Scott James.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Charter of the City of St. Albans.
And the Charter of the City of St. Albans.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of Mayor.
Discharge the duties of Mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
There you go.
All right. Uh, we've got a few minutes before we start. We've got to start right at six thirty. But I want to, and to me, it's a great honor to have Mayor Claire down here, Judge Akers. Uh, she was in office for many years. And now she's a circuit court judge here in Cinnell County. Does a wonderful job. And, uh, but I want to thank you, Mayor Claire, for coming down and doing that. That's her husband, J.B., running for House of Delegates.
Are you all?
All right. So, uh, thank you all very, very much for having me. All right. Councilman Kluisterman's going to give the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you that we're able to gather here, Lord. Lord, it's an exciting time for a new term for City Council and a new term for the Mayor, Lord. Thank you for the outcome, Lord. Lord, please give us wisdom and understanding, Lord. Lord, pray for protection for our city and our workers also. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Uh, where is the next sheriff of Cinnell County? Your latest pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Uh, Joe, right here. Yeah. By the way, Bobby Catlin is on the phone. He's calling. He, he had vacation scheduled prior to him deciding to run for council.
Oh, that's no excuse.
So, uh, praise and recognition. Uh, one thing I want to talk about, and I might have already, uh, but Yak Fest and the committee did a tremendous job. It was another successful outing and a great economic boost for the city of St. Albans. Uh, I know the next big event we have on Old Main is going to be Mount near Main Street on August the twenty-fourth. Some of the Mount near band and dance team and cheerleaders are going to be down here. It just continues to grow each and every year. And our businesses prosper during that time. Yes.
I got one, Mayor. I'd like to thank Public Works, John Boy and Alex, Stormwater, Geraldo, Chris and Tyler, Park, Evan, Brian, Mark and Ronnie, and there's some others that I don't know their names, but all three, all three groups for the work they've been doing to alleviate the drainage problems on the ball fields. They've done a fantastic job and they're still finishing up stuff to do. So I just want to thank all of you.
Any other praise or recognition? Yes, Councilman Rucker.
I want to recognize somebody, a friend of mine. I'm not recognizing them as a friend, though. We had a teacher in St. Albans that, Brandy Eskey, passed away this week. Forty-seven years old, super unexpected. One of the kindest human beings I have truly ever met in my life. She is the person, she was a resource teacher. She worked with the kids that needed the most, that, that could use the most help. Um, she found the good in every single human being walking planet Earth. And unfortunately, she passed away at forty-seven in Texas on vacation with her home, with her family. Um, but she's greatly missed. And every educator in Cinnell County should figure out who Brandy was and try and emulate, emulate something that she has done. She'll be missed. The students will miss her greatly.
She, she worked at both middle schools.
She did. And, and, uh, I was central to Albany one, one of the elementary schools in the community. Um, family's from St. Albans. Keep in your thoughts.
Thank you. Any other praise or recognition? Uh, without any further praise or recognition, I need approval of minutes from City Council, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
So move.
Second.
Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have no old business, new business. Um, well, let me read first. We need a motion to approve Department Head, City Clerk, Veronica Westfall, Treasurer, Molly Quintrell, Police Chief, Mark Gilbert, Fire Chief, Lance Carney, Park Superintendent, Kevin Pennington, Public Works Director, John Johnson, Senior Services Director, Summers Brightwell, Zoning Official, Marshall Chaney, MUC General Manager, Scott James, City Attorney, Sicarello Del Dudis and LaFon, Municipal Judge, Kevin Pennington, Prosecuting Attorney. We will not know, uh, I've got somebody that has to clear one other hurdle, uh, and City Engineer, Chapman Technical.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, committee appointments. The following committee appointments do not need to be approved. We'll get to those later, but I do want to mention them. Finance Committee, Mike Rowe, Chair, Joey Cutz, Bobby Catlin. Startup, Brian Kluisterman. Friends of the Albans, Jared Page. Annexation, Dave Rucker, Chair, Chad Campbell, Charlie Farrell. Uh, again, this committee can now have maybe a bigger role because an obstacle is no longer there for us. Uh, ordinance, Jared Page, Chair, Joey Cutz, Bobby Catlin. Public Works, Mike Rowe, Chair, Bill Knight, Brian Kluisterman. All right, um, refer to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Oh, oh, Vice Mayor election. Okay. We need, uh, nominations from the floor for Vice Mayor.
They ran on a, Jared Page for Vice Mayor for the city of St. Albans.
I'll second.
Do we have any other nominations? Somebody make a motion to close the floor for nominations?
Make a motion to close nomination.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, nay. All right, all those in favor of Jared Page as Vice Mayor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Jared. All right, before I want to move on, I do want to square one person in, uh, our next judge. This is the most seamless transition we can have. That's Kevin Pennington as our Municipal Judge. All right, you want to come up? Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kevin Pennington.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Charter of the City of St. Albans.
And the Charter of the City of St. Albans.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of, state your position.
The duties of Municipal Judge of the City of St. Albans.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I guess that's enough square in for now so we can get on with city stuff. All right.
Do you want to move back to the other committee?
Uh, we're going to back here on appointments. Okay? Yeah. All right, uh, refer to Planning and Zoning Commission. The petition from the trustees of the Washington Street Church of Christ. Their request to exchange property between the church and the city. Lots thirty-one and thirty-two for Lot Ten and part of Lot Nine.
So move. Second.
About a second. All right, we have any questions or discussions? Who's eight? With no questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Yes?
In looking at this, I was kind of confused on, are, are the lots that they want to exchange the ones at the end of the apartment lot of, or do?
No, no. What it is, is if you pull up, if you're traveling east on Washington Street and you come to stop sign the church is right here on your right, it's the one across the street. It's actually a bigger lot, all right, than the one that they want to exchange.
And they want, yeah, where the apartment was.
Yeah, where the apartment was is what they want to exchange.
That's the lot.
Yeah.
Good to figure that one out.
It can be confusing these times. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, request from St. Albans Fire Department, Chief Carney, for approval of three standard operation procedures in regards to the safe haven baby box program.
So move.
Second.
Questions or discussion? None? Everybody, everybody read their, uh, agenda and everything good? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Suggested ordinance issues, request from building zoning official for an ordinance to mid-city code Article one eighty-one point oh-two. Persons authorized to issue warrants for offenses to include building inspector.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we will, the ordinance committee will take this up at our meeting on, uh, August the fifth, and we'll have a report back after here.
Okay.
Recommendation.
All right.
Uh, move to table?
Uh, we've got a motion to move forward.
Move forward.
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
All right, any questions or discussion? Guys, what, what, I don't, I, I don't know if everybody's familiar with this, but, you know, we've turned, torn down forty-three dilapidated structures since we took office. All right? Now, these people that are on the next round, they are not signing the contract and are not willing to do it. So we have to proceed legally to get this done. And to do that, where's Marshall? You have to be able to issue those search warrants, correct?
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have no ordinances first reading, no ordinances second reading. Finance Committee report recommendations, Councilman Rowe.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to request a motion for the approval of payment of current invoices for the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'd like to request approval to, for payment to Idemia for the amount of four thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars for St. Albans Police Department Live Scan payments to be paid from light item seven hundred dash four five nine dash five nine.
Second.
Questions or discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'd like to request approval of payment to precision pump for, and valve for service in the amount of three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and forty-four cents for emergency purchase of a pump for the city pool to be paid from light item four four one dash four five nine.
Questions or discussion?
Second.
All right, one thing I want to say here is we are going to try to get this money back through FEMA because it, it, it was caused by the storms and everything back in April. So there's a chance we might be able to get reimbursed for that. No guarantees, but I just want to let you know we are trying to get reimbursed for that.
I'd like to request approval.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'd like to request approval for payment of end of year invoices.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And I'd like to request approval for end of year budget revisions.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Rowe. Uh, letters or reports, I'll start off. Uh, by law, I have to let council know that La Robies is applying for a beer license. No actions needed, but I got to let everybody know. Okay? So La Robies is applying for a beer license. Any other letters or reports? Anybody, Kim, you got anything?
Uh, our first pool party was this weekend and it was a success. I think two hundred and sixty-five people showed up. And special thanks to Kiwanis, they supplied the pizza for them. And we have a couple other ones scheduled throughout, so just stay tuned. And we'll get Bill into the fold of making the announcement for us.
Bill, you can handle that.
I can stay awake.
All right, any other letters or reports? Mike.
The Hansford Center is having a dance on Saturday, July the sixth.
July the sixth, the sixth.
Yeah, starting, uh, it's from six to nine.
Six to nine.
July day.
Very good. All right, any other letters or reports? All right, appointments, and these do need, uh, uh, action. Uh, Parks and Recreation Committee, Phyllis Romeo, Roger Massey, and Jedidiah Walls with terms to expire six-thirty twenty twenty-seven. Councilman Knight as Chair, Councilman Eads, Councilman McKinney, uh, are the, uh, council representatives.
And those run with their terms.
And they run with your terms.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Who's second?
Uh, Joey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, MUC MS four board, Councilman Page and Councilman Caudell with terms to expire six-thirty twenty twenty-eight.
So move.
Service required.
Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Planning and Zoning Commission, Joey Cutz is our Councilman Representative. Kevin Pennington's going to stay on as administrative with the terms to expire six-thirty twenty twenty-eight.
So move.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Senior Board, Councilman Eads, Councilman Caudell, Councilman Kluisterman with terms to expire six-thirty twenty twenty-eight.
So move. Second.
Questions or discussion?
Who's second?
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. St. Albans CBB, Councilman Rucker with the term to expire six-thirty twenty twenty-eight.
So move. Second.
Uh, any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Police Civil Service Commission, Lee Roberts is the mayor's appointment with the term to expire seven twenty twenty twenty-eight.
No action.
No action required. All right, uh, Fire Civil Service Commission, Jeremy Follier, Chamber of Commerce appointment with the term to expire six-six twenty twenty-six. Billing the unexpired term of Charlie Farrell, no action required. All right, uh, oh, is he? Okay. Uh, before we go to announcements, uh, govern, govern, uh, I'm going to let Governor Candidate, Patrick Morrissey speak real quick. Come on in, Patrick.
Hey, guys, how you doing?
You can stand up here in front, face them, that'd be good.
Excellent.
Yeah, that way they can hear you better than I can. How are you, sir?
Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Guys, I just wanted to come by to say hello. I want to first congratulate all the new council members and the, the change that went through over the recent election. And it's great to be back in St. Albans. I, I know that I've been here many, many times. I have to tell you, I had a wonderful time just a couple weeks ago at Yak Fest. You guys are doing such a great job. And I can tell you, I was elected twelve years ago. And when I first came to St. Albans and I was first campaigning, just the differences that we're seeing, the opportunities, the economic opportunities, uh, the building out on the parks, the storefronts, there's so many positive things on the horizon. And I'm pretty excited about it. And as hopefully your next governor, I'm going to look forward to being a partner with St. Albans and all the folks in Cinnell County because there's so many incredible opportunities in front of us. And so I just wanted to come by here tonight to say hello, to say thank you. I know we're all working together to get ready for the general election, but I wanted to say a special shout out to everyone who runs for public office. The reality is that it's not always as easy. When you put your name on the ballot, a lot of people take shots at you. And so thanks for everyone here. Jared's been an old friend. Thank you. Jared, you still work in our office. Mayor, uh, you've done some incredible things since you've been in there. And I'm looking forward to coming back again and again and really serving as a good partner with your city. Because I think the work that we're going to try to do when I'm elected governor is going to be very positive for St. Albans. I am laser focused on a lot of the economic opportunities in front of us over the upcoming years. I think Governor Justice has done some really positive things, but we have more on the horizon. My number one issue, what I'm focusing on in the governor's office, will be workforce participation. I think that's the single most important thing facing the state. And I'm going to make sure I'm putting day after day after day in. I can tell you that I've had some experiences campaigning around and being in West Virginia for a long time that we have to change the dynamic to ensure that our kids know of the incredible opportunities that are available in front of us. And I'd like to take just a moment to tell you a little story of an experience I have every year and share it with you, which is why I'm so motivated to make sure that we're driving our workforce participation numbers up. If you're in this room today, you're probably familiar with Boys State and Girls State. Am I right?
Yep.
Most people I see, uh, shaking of the heads. Every year, I make it a point to go to Boys State and Girls State. And people always say to me, well, this is great. It's an honor for you to come to speak to the kids. I don't feel it that way. Quite frankly, I probably get a lot more out of going to speak to the kids than maybe they get from me. And here's why. I look at those kids and I see hundreds of them coming together. They're some of the best and brightest kids that we have in our state. They're incredible. And you have a chance to get to know them, you have a chance to see what the future looks like in West Virginia. And I think it's a pretty bright future. And every year when I'm there, I ask them two questions. I've done it every year. I think I missed one year during COVID for Boys State. Tyler, you probably remember that. Tyler used to work with me in the AG's office. And every year I ask them two questions. First question, how many people here want to go to college? Do you know virtually everyone raises their hand? Virtually everyone. Then I followed up and said, how many people here think there will be a job opportunity available for them when you're done? Twenty percent of the people raised their hands. If we're going to fix what L's West Virginia and really start to rise in the economic rankings, we're going to have to make sure that all the young people know there are good job opportunities available. And I know before I decided to run for governor, as I was thinking about what to do, I looked at sixty-five thousand open jobs here in the state. There are a lot of job opportunities for kids and for people of all ages in West Virginia. And I think it's important that we convey that to people and ensure that if I get elected governor, we're going to be able to better articulate those jobs to all of the counties across West Virginia. And then you start to build a little bit more hope in terms of the future of our state. We have to get to our kids. I think one of the things you could do right away on day one is build out a portal that better communicates to kids and to people around the state and outside the state. Here are the sixty-five thousand jobs. Here's how you go find them. And that's going to start to drive hope in our state. And we need to drive hope in our state. And the best way to do it is through our kids. I'm looking at doing various VOTAC programs to build that out because I think it's noble to work with your hands. I'm the first in my family who ever made it to college and to law school. I didn't grow up with very much money. So, but I feel fortunate. I had good opportunities. I worked hard. Quite frankly, like many of you in the room, you fight hard in the arena, your parents teach you a good work ethic, you know, you try to be honorable in what you do, you can go far in life. I think a lot of our kids will know they're going to have those kind of opportunities if we make them available for them. And given all the many opportunities workforce, I think we can put a lot of our kids to work. And then we could begin that real robust competition with all the states that we touch. And I'm fond of talking about the backyard brawl. Many of you, uh, probably have heard me talk about that on the campaign trail. I say we're going to have a backyard brawl similar to a WU plays pit. And you guys all know about that. And just imagine when we're taking on Ohio and Pennsylvania and Maryland and Virginia and Kentucky on all the economic statistics, on taxation, on regulation, on workforce rules, on licensing rules, education, there's so much that we can get done. That's what excites me to run for governor and to serve as the governor of your great state. I will tell you, I'm humbled to have been chosen by the voters of the state to serve as your Attorney General the past three terms. I don't take anything lightly. It is an honor and I try to trust in the public because you ultimately are in charge. I work for you. I take that very, very seriously. That's why I wanted to come tonight and say thank you to all those who have put themselves forward to serve. It's a noble act. And despite all the crap you give, I appreciate it. I hope everyone in this room does too. And I look forward to being back in St. Albans many times into the future, spend a little bit of time here. I see your next sheriff is here. He used to work in my office. He did a great job. He's going to be an outstanding sheriff in Cinnell County. And it's nice to have so many friendly faces here. And I hope to be able to come back and spend more time with you in the weeks, months and years ahead. My name is Patrick Morrissey. I'm your current Attorney General. I am running for governor. I'd be humbled if you would elect me in the fall. Uh, but even if you're not with me, know that I'll do my best to serve all of you in the years ahead. Thank you and God bless you.
All right, announcements. Uh, Public Works Committee, Wednesday, July third at eight a.m. at the City Garage. Independence Day holiday, Thursday, July fourth, City MUC. Independence Day holiday, Thursday, July fourth, city MUC offices will be closed as well as July fifth. We decided on that today, the county, other municipalities, and we feel that the state will do the same thing. Trash will not run on Thursday, but Thursday's pickup will be Friday and there will be no extra pickup this week on trash pickup. Finance Committee, Monday, July eighth, four thirty p.m. in the MUC conference room. Parks Committee, Thursday, July eleventh at six p.m. at the Hensford Center. City Council, Monday, July fifteenth at six thirty p.m. in the council chambers. MS four MUC board, Tuesday, July sixteenth at five thirty p.m. in the MUC conference room. Any other announcements?
Mayor, those on the ordinance committee announcement staff, Tyler will be in Milwaukee at our next council meeting. We will be meeting here in council chambers at five thirty on July fifteenth for our next meeting. So that's Joey and Bobby.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other announcements? All right, with no further announcements, time for public forum. Any residents wishing to address council may step up to the podium, give your name, your address, and you've got five minutes to speak your piece. Herm, nothing to note?
No, he's saying that.
Okay. All right, with no public forum speakers appearing, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
To adjourn.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.